Nicole, is pretty much everybody in?
Yes, I'm muting people.
Okay, so it is six thirty, so we're going to call. Sorry, my agenda's and I have multiple windows open here. On the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three to order. At six thirty-one, on the agenda is the the call to order pledge of allegiance, visitors' comments. Bear with me one second, I have multiple screens open for this here, so. Old business, other old business, new business. We're gonna have an FY twenty-four budget update by Dr. Muir, Mayflower Software for Assessor Approval, Townhouse Fire Escape Quote, Other New Business, Clerk Vote to Place on Annual Ballot, Planning Board Vacancy and Page Agricultural Fund Trustee, and also K-12 Quabin Regional School District Committee Member. Commitment Appointment Procedure, Potential Appointments. Looks like we have Marcus. Do I have an old agenda here? Sorry, everybody, just give us a second.
I, I think I have an old one too, actually, and I think I, I did take Marcus Hayden out as his request to be removed.
Okay, so, okay. Okay, so. I'm looking at the one that's on the site, okay, so we'll go with the one on my town government. Everything else is fine up until Committee Appointment Procedure, Potential Appointments, Lisa Cohen Master Plan Community Development Advisory Committee, Bill Cole Master Plan Community Development Advisory Committee, Rachel Lucia Heart of Council on Aging Discussion Intervote Relative to ARPA Funding Meeting Minutes for October three, two thousand and twenty-two, October four, two thousand and twenty-two, October ten, two thousand and twenty-two, October twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two, November seven, two thousand and twenty-two, November nine, two thousand and twenty-two, and November twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, Town Administrator Report Signatures and Approvals included in those, there are others, but is the Winter Recovery Grant Reimbursement Selectmen Roundtable and Adjournment. I think that is the correct agenda. Just a note before we get into the official agenda and do the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting is not being streamed to YouTube as the person who does that for the town had an emergency. So it is being recorded, you should have been prompted to accept the recording on Zoom when you entered, so it is being recorded on Zoom. It will not be on YouTube this evening, but the link will be forwarded off and ultimately put up to YouTube. So we just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. First item on the agenda, other than Call to Orders Pledge of Allegiance, if you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance. There is a flag behind Nicole. I will stand, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have to confess that when it's just the three of us or four of us saying it, I'm always afraid I'm gonna make a mistake on the wording. So thankfully, nobody calls us out on that, I appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is Visitors' Comments. So this section of the agenda is designed for comments from visitors on an item that is not on the agenda. There are twenty-eight participants here in the Zoom meeting, so if you do want to speak under the visitor comment, please raise your hand. Nicole will unmute you. Nicole, do you see any hands under visitor comments?
I do not.
Going once, going twice. Okay. Next item on the agenda, under Old Business, we have other old businesses, or anything that we need to address under Old Business? Nicole, or Kelly and Rob? Go ahead, Nicole.
The only thing that we had, that I have that I didn't put in the agenda, it's under signatures and approvals, but, and I know you can't see this, but with the ABC, licensees who failed to renew for two thousand and twenty-three and licensees disapproved by the town for two thousand and twenty-three needs to be signed by you, although we have none, I didn't think we needed to send it, but you have to send it even if it's blank. So if I can put it in the box for you guys to sign, it's, it's not really a rush because we sent all the renewals in, but this does need to be attached to the, to the renewals from two thousand and twenty-three.
We have done that in the past.
Yeah, I, I had somebody else that did it in my last town, so it went by me.
I don't, yeah, I can certainly stop and sign.
Same. If you leave it in the mailbox.
I won't forget this time.
I found it.
You did. It's a miracle.
They were right on top, I'm not sure how much I would have loved.
Anything under other old business? I think one of the things we talked about in the last meeting, Nicole, and this might be something we still need to follow up. Ann Barnes asked a question relative to the properties on Church Street, I believe. Do we have any updates on them, or we can just continuing to follow up on them? I don't recall the numbers of them, but those are two vacant properties on Church Street, do we have an update on any of that?
Yes, so I was looking into it, we didn't have anything as far as the Board of Selectmen goes. And I had reached out to another town administrator that has done this in the past and gave me a procedure that's able, that is able to do it without owning the properties. However, I did ask the Board of Health, and they have significant documentation on it, I don't know if they have it on both, but they have a very thick folder on one of the homes. And I, I gave it back to them to, you know, I gave them the pictures and the card, everything that I had so far to be able to research to see if they had condemned it, they had gone to court, they had taken into receivership. I don't know what that means or where it goes from there, but it is the Board of Health that, that really is the one to, you know, make sure that it either gets condemned or the town, you know, starts the procedure in taking it. That was last week, so hopefully I'll have an update from them soon to give to you guys.
Great, thank you, and we'll just, can we sort of just keep that on our radar so we can just sort of follow up with that? And just make sure that we're that had been on our radar for a while, but it sort of got put aside with all of the other things that we have that are important. So if we can sort of just keep that, and I'll just make enough to keep that on my radar as well. Um, anything else, Kelly or Rob, under Old Business that you?
I have, do have one thing, actually.
Okay.
The retirement for the retirees, the percentage, and you wanted to know how much, et cetera. And I reached out to the Worcester Retirement Board, who gave me an update. It's a percentage of not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars up to FY twenty-six. I don't have the exact numbers yet, and I, I didn't think that we should be the first community to act on it. There, you know, it's gone throughout the entire Worcester County, so I, I have it on my forefront, but before I have actual numbers, and again, to see what, you know, what the pulse of the rest of the county is. I didn't really want to jump the gun for you guys and have you really vote on it before the whole county gets to kind of digest it and see what kind of impact it's going to be, so I do have that right here, but it's not prepared enough for me to bring it forward to you guys.
Right, so what Nicole's referring to, just for those folks who aren't aware is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole, but we were notified by Worcester Retirement Board that they're looking to do a two percent adjustment for retirees. So that would mean anyone who is a retiree from the town of Hardwick would get a percent in their retirement benefits, am I correct, through Worcester County Retirement?
On top of the three percent that was approved, so it would give them a total of a five percent increase.
Do we, and maybe one of the things in following up, do we, do we have an idea of who we have on Hardwick, who are, who's currently collecting, is that something we can get from Worcester County? So we could sort of figure out monetarily what it would affect, what would it, it would impact to us?
Yeah, I got preliminary numbers of a little over fifteen hundred.
What I understand you need to say is that we should hold, because there's other communities that are digesting this. My internet's unstable, so I'm gonna shut my video off. That there's other communities that are digesting this and that we, there's no urgency for us to vote on this, so we're gonna do more due diligence and revisit it.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Anything else under Old Business before we move on to New Business? New Business? Dr. Muir. We have Cheryl. The Board in FY twenty-four. Doctor? Nicole?
Julie, you're cutting out, do you want me to ask Dr. Muir to start?
Yes, please, but what I asked is if they could unmute themselves, or you may have to ask them to unmute.
Hi, Nicole, I, I, I'm here, I, for some reason, my video is not working, so, and I think Cheryl is with us also, can you hear me? Okay.
Hi.
Okay, hopefully my video will kick in at some point. So we, when Julie read the agenda, we understood that we were sort of here for a budget update and then a more general update. Our original intention was to attend a select board meeting several weeks ago in order to give you a general update and keep the select board abreast of what was happening in the district, and so I can, it feels like we're at the budget update portion of this, of the agenda, but just keep, let me know, you know, sort of if we, if we, when you would like me to speak to the general update. I asked Cheryl to join us, Cheryl Duval, who is our Director of Administrative Services, to answer any questions that you might have about the budget. I'll just start by saying our first Budget Subcommittee Meeting is tomorrow evening. We would love to have, you know, any town officials attend that. The meeting is, of course, virtual, will be available virtual or in person, and we will record it and post it to YouTube as well for anyone who may not be available to attend, that meeting starts at six tomorrow evening. So we, you know, we really don't have a lot of specifics at this point, because we haven't shared any preliminary budget information with the school committee at this point. We will be, of course, having ongoing meetings with the Budget Subcommittee through the, through the spring. We have heard that, I don't know if this is official, but we did hear that the governor at a meeting last week with MMA announced that she would provide local aid numbers in advance of her official budget being released. The deadline, of course, as you, as you probably know, is in early March for the new governor, so we're hoping that that, you know, I don't know if that's just aid to the towns, or if it includes our school aid or not, but we will, we hopefully will have some information about that soon, sooner than March, which we were anticipating getting.
Sheila, I was there, and she said before March first, and she did include chapter seventy. Included all, it was, it was a unicorn message, actually, so let's hope.
Yes. And let's hope it's, it's good news. So really, we're, we're, you know, again, as I said, we're really in the, in the budget development stages, Cheryl has been working very closely with our principals to, and other departments to make sure that, you know, we've got everything accounted for in the, in the budget proposal, Cheryl, I don't know if you want to provide any additional detail or any, or any information. I think you will, one thing that I did want, that I was planning to bring to the select board's attention is sort of just an example, it's in the documents that, that I, that my secretary Jess or my assistant Jess shared with all of you today, just an example of one of the unfunded mandates that, you know, I'm sure the town of Hardwick gets them frequently, but we also do. You, you'll see in those documents a letter that Cheryl wrote to Senator Goby earlier this fall, when we were notified that the tuition increase that was granted to out of, to schools that provide services to students who attend out-of-district placements for students with disabilities, they were granted a fourteen percent tuition increase. For Quabin, that means a two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-dollar increase to what we pay for out-of-district tuition, that's given that all, you know, all enrollments remain the same in FY twenty-four. That increase alone, if we didn't add one dollar to our budget, or FY twenty-four would increase our budget by over a half a percent, it's actually point six-three percent. So this is, you know, this is something that's very troubling, this is not just Quabin's problem, this is a problem for all school districts in the Commonwealth. And I know that the School Committee Association and the Superintendent's Association and others, probably MMA as well, are working on trying to provide some relief for this staggering increase. The increases typically have been two to three percent over the past several years, and a fourteen percent increase, as you can imagine, is a huge blow to all school districts, so I just share that as an example of one of the, one of the unfunded mandates that we are grappling with as we head into our budget cycle. And I'll stop here and either answer questions, or if Cheryl wants to add anything, she can chime in.
Good evening, everybody, I don't have a lot to say tonight, other than that one increase in our budget is more than we had expected. We do have a few of our larger contractor, contracts that we know what the costs are, we got our fuel oil bid for next year all set. We, it was a twenty percent increase, but we've got a bid, and we know what our electric costs are, other than that, all of our contracts are up in the air, including the sticks contracts for our collective bargaining groups, so it's a little difficult going into a meeting tomorrow night with so many unknowns, but all of the details will be available tomorrow night, and I hope that you can come, because it's going to be a long spring as we try to wrap our head around how we're going to fund this budget.
Do you have any budget questions for us?
I don't, Dr. Muir and Cheryl, I appreciate sort of an update in the process. We're likewise going through the, you know, the budget process as well, so I'm sure as we continue to move through that, there'll be more updates on both sides, but appreciate that, you know, you're willing to sort of speak to where the process is. Although the agenda didn't necessarily indicate a general update, if you would like to give us a general update, that would, now would be the time, if that's okay with you.
Sure, I will, I'll be brief, I know you have a, a long agenda tonight, and I don't want to take too much of your time, but one of the things that I have been trying to do in an effort to continue to build strong relationships and collaborative relationships with the five member communities is provide you with ongoing updates as to sort of the things that we're working on in the district and things that, you know, perhaps we can work on together. So I won't, I won't necessarily take the time to share my screen tonight, but you have, we've been sending monthly updates to all town officials and to Nicole, of course, that are school committee reports, previously, we have been providing school committee reports verbally, just sort of updating the school committee every month on things that are happening in the district this year, given some feedback from, actually from town officials that, you know, having more information about what's happening in the district on an ongoing basis would, would sort of help. We've begun to have written school committee reports, and every department in the school district provides an update, written update, every month to the school committee, those are then forwarded to all town officials. So again, there's a lot of information contained in these documents. Hopefully, you've been receiving them, hopefully, they are helping you. You know, they're providing you with some more information than you have had in the past on a monthly basis about happenings in the school district, things that we're working on, initiatives that we, that we are undertaking. And there's also, you know, a comprehensive grant update in those documents every month that Cheryl provides, curriculum and instruction updates, plant and facilities, our athletics, special education, and our food service update, so, so again, just wanted to bring your, your attention to those documents, hopefully, you're finding those helpful and informative, and if there's any, you know, if you have any feedback for us with regard to those, we would love to, love to hear from you. Another thing that was sent to you recently was the report of the Rural Schools Commission. I think I've talked about this a couple of times in the past, but the Rural Schools Commission was was a commission that was mandated several years ago when the Student Opportunity Act became law. You may remember that the Student Opportunity Act is a funding mechanism that addresses the, some of the challenges or some of the inadequacies in the funding formula for schools at the state level. It took many years for the Student Opportunity Act to be enacted, and along the way, there were lots of opportunities for municipal officials and school district leaders and others to provide input as to what would be included in the Student Opportunity Act. It was, it was originally grew out of a foundation study committee that identified certain areas where schools were underfunded, health insurance being one of them, services for students whose first language is not English. And so as a result of that, there was a great increase in school funding. Unfortunately, schools like Quabin did not benefit from that great increase in school funding, because we are a school that has, that, like many schools, have, over the years, had declining enrollment. And schools that have had declining enrollment really didn't benefit from the Student Opportunity Act, in fact, Cheryl could quote the numbers, but the vast majority of the student opportunity, millions and millions of dollars that were funded in the Student Opportunity Act for schools really were provided to urban centers. Along the way, it was identified that rural school districts and the communities that support rural school districts also had funding challenges, and we advocated at the time for some funding for rural schools to be included in the Student Opportunity Act. That didn't happen, but what, what was included in the legislation was a mandate for there to be a Rural Schools Commission to study the fiscal health of rural school districts. I happened to be appointed to that commission by the governor as a representative from the Massachusetts Regional Superintendent's Association. We concluded our work on that commission in July, and there was a report produced, which you now have a copy of. I think I may have shared it with you previously. Out of that work came thirty-six recommendations for challenges and solutions that would help rural school districts and the communities that support them. So I just wanted to bring your attention to that, there has been legislation filed just last week by Representative Natalie Blay. With regard to this, there are, I think, probably fifteen recommendations in her legislation, but number one is a significant increase in rural school aid, currently, rural school aid is funded in FY twenty-three at six million dollars. The Rural Schools Commission recommended an increase, a tenfold increase to sixty million dollars. If that were to be funded, I think that the, the challenges that we face as a rural school district would be significantly reduced, in fact, they would probably disappear altogether, and I think the burden on our communities to support our budget would be probably next to non-existent, so the reason I'm, I'm sort of mentioning this tonight and bringing your attention to it is that I hope that as this legislation starts to move through the House and the Senate, that we could work together to really advocate for it. I do believe that MMA is aware of this legislation at this point, and certainly the Superintendent's Association is making this part of their legislative platform. The School Committee Association, I believe, is as well. And again, I hope that this is something that as, as it gets, you know, gets to the point that we can actually start to really get behind it, that all of our communities, as well as other rural communities, will really advocate for this strongly. It's going to be a very significant uphill battle to get this passed, because, as you know, our representation on Beacon Hill is not, we don't have that many representatives or senators on Beacon Hill, but it is probably the best shot we have of solving our, some of our financial, many of our financial challenges. So I'm, I'm gonna stop there with that, but if you have any questions about that, I would be happy to answer them, or I will certainly keep Nicole informed as I, as I hear more on the legislation, and hopefully, again, we can work together to advocate for that.
Thank you, Dr. Muir.
And one final thing that I just wanted to mention, some of you may be aware, we recently launched a fundraising push, fundraising initiative to begin to raise some funds for the A push, fundraising um initiative to um begin to um raise some funds for the um. Press box on Alumni Field, if you've been to Alumni Field or um. Football field, soccer field, field hockey field. You will know that uh the, we do not have a press box and currently, um, what we are using is some scaffolding that we are renting. For coaches and others uh to um view in um, report on games. Several years ago, well, actually pre-COVID, we began to think about. The inadequacy of those facilities and um began to talk about how we could. Um, increase the um quality of the athletic facilities up to par with. Um, other local school districts and uh we put that on hold during COVID. But um now we are hoping to move forward with uh with that initiative, again, the athletic department is um. Really working hard to raise some money, we've raised, um, I don't know exactly how much, but around seven thousand dollars, I think at this point. Uh, and there's a lot of fundraising events scheduled for the upcoming um upcoming seasons. However, um at some point, we may uh need to come to the communities and ask for. Um, an opportunity, ask for permission um to borrow money to fund the remainder of that project, what it would entail is taking. Two sections out of our current bleachers, uh, our bleachers are only six levels high now, we would add fifteen rows of. Seats and then on top of those fifteen rows of seats would be um a press box. So again, we just really wanted to bring this to your attention, we're hoping to raise. A significant portion of this money by fundraising uh initiatives, but ultimately. Uh, we don't think we'll be able to raise the full amount, we're not sure exactly what the full amount is. But it will be a costly project and um we may, depending on, you know, where we are in the process, we may. Ask our communities to uh put a town meeting warrant on um, on a, on a future town meeting. Um, for community approval for us to borrow the money to complete the project. And that's all I have for updates.
Thank you, Dr. Muir.
You're welcome.
There is um, there is a question in the chat and I believe that that's why um Anna Will Van Arsdale have their hand up. It says, do members of the public have access to the school committee update reports?
Yes, all of those reports. On our um, on our website with the um school committee agendas, so yes, they are absolutely all. Available to the public and we encourage you to read them.
Well, did you have an additional question that you want to ask Dr. Muir or does that answer your question?
It did answer that question, first, I just wanted to thank Dr. Muir for attending, you know, wanted to thank you for your. Clear presentation, Dr. Muir, and for your efforts to raise funds to help our school system, and I want to ask if. Perhaps you could reach out to the elected officials, of course, at Town Hall, but also to a broader group of us through some mechanism. So that we can try to assist you in fundraising efforts, lobbying efforts. To try and help you obtain the funds that you need to run an effective school system, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, I appreciate that and uh we would, we would love to. Um, you know, again, if you have any ideas about how to reach the greater public, we're, we're trying to, we've got a lot of things on our website, although we are. Updating our website, our website has not, this is just another piece of news, it's in all of the school committee reports, but. Our website has um not been updated in, I don't know, over twenty years, I think, and it's, it is not. Um, it's not easy to navigate, to be very honest, and we recognize that as in, in an effort to make. Information about the school district more accessible to the public and our, and our families, we are currently. Uh, working on updating and um providing a new website, it probably won't be up until later in the spring. But that is something that we recognize is a challenge, but I would love, if you have any ideas about how to get the word out. Um, I would love to um hear them and, you know, you can certainly contact me at any point. Love to partner with anyone who has um, again, has ideas about how we can um work together.
That's, my wife Anne and I will reach out to you, I expect others will reach out to you as well, we do want to help.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much. And again, I apologize that my video is not working this evening.
Well, that's a Hardwick condition. A country condition, we understand, thank you again.
Thank you, Will. Any questions for Dr. Muir or Cheryl? Nicole, Rob, Kelly?
Um, I'm just curious about what we can do to help advocate on this. The legislator that um, Dr. Muir was speaking about, can we, you know, as a town could be, be writing to people? Um, if she has specific ideas on how we can do that, I'm just curious.
I, I know for, just as a frame of reference, Dr. Muir, I know for some of the professional associations that I, I belong to. They send a sample letter out of all of the pertinent facts and um, so it's a suggested letter that you could send to your. Legislator to advocate for a certain position or certain funding, would that be something that you could potentially um? And, and I, and I say that it's helpful because we want to be sure we're referencing the correct. Um, obviously, we can advocate for all of the funding for the town of Hardwick, but if there's specific. Um, initiatives or things that we should be advocating for, um, if, if there were sample letter that were drafted. Um, you know, that would be helpful.
Yes, I, I do anticipate that we will have a sample letter that will, we will distribute to town officials, absolutely. And um, I do believe that there are some folks that who are going to um. Connect with MMA and how, and hopefully, um, maybe, I don't, I don't know how they determine or what process they use to determine their. Legislative platform, but um hoping maybe to, to draw there, I do believe that. Representative Blay has connected with them at this point or is, is planning to very soon, so. I will absolutely um, you know, keep you all informed and updated through Nicole, if there's any. If there's anything that I have access to that um I think would help, be helpful. I will, I will certainly keep you um updated.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question to Dr. Muir?
Sure, absolutely, Nicole.
Um, I, I'm familiar with this, uh, I did it literally the same, I think, just bef, I think all the towns were doing it just before COVID. With the press box, bleachers, even a track, I don't know how your, what shape your track is in. But do you have a, do you have an approximate amount on how much the press box and bleachers will cost and also? How, what, what condition the track is in?
The track is in great condition, we just had it resurfaced, um Cheryl can tell me two years ago, so our track is. Is in great condition, um, the, we got a price on the press box. Pre-COVID, um, all the engineering and. See, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of infrastructure in terms of foundation and excavation work that's necessary. Uh, it was, it was in the range of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars at that time. We expect that it's probably close to three hundred thousand dollars at this point, just, and this is purely an estimate. Um, no official numbers at all, just based on the increase in construction costs that uh we know. Have, have occurred um post-COVID, so we do not have a firm number at this point. We just, we really just wanted to get going on the fundraising and see if we could hit um. A significant goal in terms of fundraising before we. Had to look at other funding sources.
Good, um, do you have ADA accessibility to that press box? That was something that came up as a surprise to us.
We, we will, yes, it's part of, a part of what we planned, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Kelly, Rob, or are there any one, anyone in the um Zoom group that has questions for Dr. Muir? Okay, well, certainly if you do have questions for Dr. Muir, you can reach out to her directly or Cheryl. But you can also go through Nicole and we can certainly try to get answers, um. Thank you both very much for, for coming and giving us an update and a, and a budget update.
Thank you, good night. Thank you.
Um, and unfortunately, um. Uh, we would love to attend the budget committee meeting tomorrow night, but we have a previously scheduled meeting that we've been trying to schedule for a very long time, so. Um, we won't be able to attend, but um we'll certainly look for updates as they come out. Um, next item on the agenda under new business is the Mayflower software for assessor approval. Have you, um Kelly and Rob, have you had a chance to look at that?
I have.
This is a standard, um, standard um contract of the, that comes uh each year from our Board of Assessors.
Yep.
Questions on the contract, are we ready to make a motion to approve the contract?
I'm happy to make a motion, I'm just wondering, um, if you want me to read the whole cost breakdown that's on, I think, like the third or fourth page. And I do have a question, it says FY twenty four, which this is a quote for. Is a five-year reevaluation year and those services have been quoted separately, so are we not approving that right now?
No, um, she didn't, she actually has um soliciting some quotes. Um, and will be putting it in the FY twenty four budget, requesting it be put in the twenty four budget. It's about twenty-five thousand dollars, it needs to be done every five years.
Right.
So I think, um, I think if you wanted to make the motion by item. As, as mentioned in the cost breakdown on page seven, I think that would be helpful, Kelly.
Okay. Just make sure. Yep, okay, so I would make a motion to approve the Mayflower valuation uh quote. For items one through four, the cost will be billed on a per diem basis of five fifty a day and for item five. Five oh four appraisal, the cost will be two thousand dollars as submitted from the assessors.
Is there a second to the motion, Rob?
He's still unmute.
So it's been moved and seconded to um approve the Mayflower contract, as Kelly mentioned, any other discussion? Hearing none, since we are on Zoom, um, we do need to call the roll.
I'm sorry, Julie?
Yes.
Um, it's just for accepted by one person, I don't know if you want to authorize me to sign it or authorize you to sign it. But maybe included with the approval of the contract would be for whoever to execute it.
Okay, Kelly, do you want to amend your motion?
Sure, um, I will amend my motion to include. Um, authorizing Nicole to sign the contract.
I'll second that.
So the amendment has been moved and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, um, I will, since, again, since we are on Zoom, we need to call the roll and Rob, you're first on my screen, Rob Ruggles?
Yes, yes.
Kelly Kemp?
Yes.
And Julie Quink is a yes, the motion carries, thank you.
Was that the motion for the amendment, was that the motion for the?
Oh, we're getting really technical now, Rob.
We'll just write, we'll just write uh, one, one, uh, one motion.
We can, I can call the vote again if you'd like on the original motion.
No, it's okay.
Why don't, what, for, for consistency or for appropriateness sakes, I'll call the roll on the original motion, Rob?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Julie is yes, okay, great, thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is the Townhouse Fire Escape Quote. Have you had a chance, um, both of you had a chance to review it?
I did.
Any questions?
Okay, can I ask who, uh, was this Peter Schmidt that put this out there to, or? Um, solicited the quotes, by looks of it?
If she wants to uh speak to it, I, I was given the quotes and originally, I mean, it's not. An amount that really needs to come to the board, uh, it can just be approved because it's under ten thousand and they did solicit and they received quotes. Um, I'm just kind of bringing it to your attention, first of all, it needs to um be fixed by the next. Uh, fair, per the building inspector and um. Um, I, I mean, I would take it from the townhouse budget, it's not obviously sort of uh. It's not, it wasn't budgeted for, um, but with keeping in, you know. Ensuring that we know throughout the year how much each individual I, line item will cost. Um, you know, I don't know how, how you guys want to handle it. There's one for forty-five hundred, one for fifty-five hundred.
It's Ann Barnes here and. And Peter did get the quotes, um, and we both met with both men. Uh, and they both seemed like they would be okay, um, very knowledgeable. Um, so we could go with the lower quote, I don't believe we have the money in the budget for this. And we will have to have a couple more oil deliveries and the furnace cleaning.
Is this something that we, um, so in terms of funding, Nicole, I, I'm not sure what's in their budget. But is this something that we could, um, is this a good candidate for ARPA funding?
You could, I think I can find it in the budget as well.
Okay.
It isn't, uh, you know, it isn't something that is a typical expense, uh, it's more. Maintenance, it is, you know, again, the way that I had in historically budgeted would be to. Continuously use the account, even if it goes negative, to make sure that we know what we're using for each account each year and we know. You know, realistically what we should be budgeting for um each year for each department or. Or building or whatever it is, um, you know, this is kind of like probably a one-time thing, will we have to? Do all kinds of welding again to the fire escape, probably not. Do we want to put money into the townhouse for maintenance for things like this, that, you know, these are all budgeting questions, it's entirely up to you. I can find it in the budget because, you know, I can find it by the end of the year with, with other accounts, uh, so we. Again, are consistent and know it's coming out of the accounts, you are very, it's under your purview to use ARPA, um. Whatever you think.
Kelly and Rob, do you have thoughts on this?
I think that because it's not a ordinary item. I don't think we should try to find this through the budgeting process, I think it might kind of make things look funky. Uh, it's just my opinion on the matter.
Well, I think, I think maybe if Nicole, I don't want to, I, I don't want to see, uh, speak for you, but I, I, maybe what I think you're saying is so that we know what the total costs are. And at the end of the year, if there isn't sufficient, you know, um, funds from other budgets, it would ultimately come out of free cash, so it would ultimately be. That's how it would be funded is, is through free cash.
Yeah, so the thing that I think about that is, you know, if it happens three or four years down the road, ARPA is no longer there, so. You know, I, I kind of tried to keep ARPA things on high-end. Once-in-a-lifetime kind of things that we'll need or, or, you know, the one-time, um. One-time expenses that we know that we have. one-time expenses that we know that we have now that we won't have after FY twenty four, so. You know, I, I, I understand completely that we have this little pot of money that we can use and then we can be done with it. It, I don't know, will the townhouse need something else next year, well, you know, to be, to understand what each department needs, that's just kind of how I've kept track of things in the past with the way I budget, but once again, it's entirely up to you, so we can use ARPA funds, I can, I can, we can wait and if, if we can't cover it, we can use free cash. Yeah, an article, I don't, however you guys want to do it, I think there's so many different ways, but we have had, you know, a healthy, I don't want to say healthy, I mean, it's been consistent over the past two years or eighteen months that I've been here that there has been a little bit of free cash to be able to, to be, you know, that we know that we have in the budget at the end of the year is what I mean, that we could cover it. But then again, it's, it wasn't expected, so it really comes down to how you want to look at things.
I'd like to make a comment, Peter here. It falls under life safety, so I basically want to reinforce what you said, that it should really be done as soon as possible, I don't know how it's funded, that's up to you, but it does create an issue of can we have people up there anymore on the second floor of the town building with, with a appropriate working escape. So I, I really lacked on it.
I don't, I don't think we're questioning the validity of the expense, Peter, I think we're just sort of talking about in the appropriateness and necessity of it. I think we're talking about, do we, you know, are, if it's a, a repair that has to be funded through ARPA, the, the board has to specifically vote that funding, that's really what we're talking about here is sort of which pocket of money. I'm, I'm of the same, I understand Rob's perspective, but I've also of the same mind for Nicole, it's not the fire escape, it's going to be something else. So what this is indicative of is maybe our maintenance budget line for the house isn't large enough that we are not maybe doing preventative, enough preventative maintenance there, so I think either way is fine with me. On how we handle this.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna also kind of agree with you Julie. I do think that it needs to happen sooner than later, one for safety, two for, well, the prices of stuff just continues to keep going up. And these quotes, one of them has a date of November, is that still even accurate? So I question that, and I do think that this, I'm not sure that this is a good fit for ARPA.
What is, what is the recommendation of the Townhouse Committee or Group? For, are they suggesting that we take the lowest bidder, which is Mayberry's Portable Welding?
We didn't vote on it as a group, we went over them and we thought that you would probably want to take the lowest bid. The, we liked both men and felt that they could do a good, safe job with it. Of course, with the welding near the building, you worry about safety, they both had plans for fire blankets and things.
And as you can see, most of the cost is labor. So I would have gone with the lower quote, it doesn't meet a threshold of needing to come to you for a vote in the event they had the money in the budget, if, you know, there was a certain amount of maintenance money. I brought it to your attention so you could see that, you know, this, this is an extra cost that, you know, is still an expense-related cost and that my suggestion would be to go with the lowest bidder. But I, I want, I just wanted to bring it to your attention so you know and you see like this has come up in the past where the building inspector didn't want to shut it down for the fair, but also it probably wasn't aware that events will happen throughout the year and thinks it's just done for the fair, so as, as Peter said, you know, we'll make, we'll, we'll bring this forward, the only, the only thing that you'd need to vote on tonight would be whether or not you want to use ARPA funds and then that would require a vote, if you would like me to use regular budgetary funding, then you can just tell me to do that.
I'm okay with using regu- regular budgetary funding and then we know that this will have to make this up. Sorry Kelly, I do that we should secure as soon as possible.
I think we got the gist of that.
Yeah. Did you mishap?
You're breaking up again.
Escape. No, any other discussion on this, are we prepared to direct Nicole on what to do with this?
I'm good, I mean, if, if we're in agree, if we're agreeing in agreeance, I can talk.
I am, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I think we can go with Nicole's recommendation to take the lowest bidder. It sounds like Ian and the, the group have looked at both and feel comfortable with both, so I'd be inclined to go with the lowest bidder and let's take it out of the budget. And knowing again that we'll have to make up the, if there's, there's a shortfall in the budget line, item will have to make it up.
I'm fine with that.
Rob, are you good with that?
Sure.
Okay. Nicole, can you work with the Townhouse Group to get this done as soon as we can?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Any other new business that we need to talk about?
I have one thing that was brought to me today by Jen.
Sure.
The tax map maintenance proposal for the town. It's once again not, well, it's a contract, so that's why I insisted that it come to you and, and not just, not just, you know what, I think I'll put it in the next agenda so you have it and you can look at it, it's just the GIS which started January first and goes through twelve thirty-one for the assessors. But I'll put it on the next agenda, I'm sorry, never mind, I think you should see it and read it.
Okay, thank you Nicole. Anything else under other new business? Okay, the next item is, I know our town clerk is on with us requesting to vote to place on the annual ballot the planning board vacancy and the Hardwick member vacancy on the K to twelve Quabon Regional School District Committee, I think those were the two that we were looking at.
Page Agricultural Fund trustee as well.
Okay. I knew there was a third, again, going through the two agendas, it's a little difficult to, to keep up. Sure, absolutely.
Yes, no, the page is, page is not correct, I had sent instructions to Angie to remove that and we, we did do that. So the vacant, the vacancies are planning board created by a resignation that was filed with my office on the thirteenth by Eric Volheim effective April ten. And then Ed Kelly, Ned Kelly is resigning from the K through twelve Quabon Regional School Committee effective April ten as well. Both of those terms have expiration dates in twenty twenty-four. So pursuant to Master Law forty-one ten, no election shall be held for any office pursuant to this section unless the selectmen file with the town clerk a notice of an election for such office, not less than fifteen days before the last day, blah, 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 to submit nomination papers for certification, so for the April ten election, the deadline is February seventeen, so I would need a vote and a, a notice from Nicole or, or someone just stating that you wish to place on the April ten ballot the vacancy that will occur for one year for the planning board and the vacancy that will occur for one year for the K through twelve Quabon Regional School Committee, at that time, once you do that, then we're able to put it on the ballot and people would also be able to take out nomination papers for those unexpired terms.
And Ryan, as a follow-up relative to are posted and, and you've been very clear about the timing of papers, it would follow the same procedure as anyone taking out papers for a current, an office that is up for normal recurring election, so. I guess what I'm trying to say is that people would need to take papers out for these positions and return them by February seventeenth.
That is correct, so in other words, there needs to be at least fifteen days, there needs to be, the notice that you give me has to be at least fifteen days from the deadline. We've already, our town bylaws stipulate the date of the election will be April ten and then a certification of those names to be turned into a board of registrars and then in turn turned into the, to the town clerk. Based upon that calendar, February seventeen at five PM, which is a Friday, is the deadline to turn, it, it's also the deadline to take out papers, so. On Friday, the February seventeenth, I plan on being in the office from two to five, I mean, the building's typically closed, but I will be there in case there is anyone that hasn't turned in papers or if they want to take them out, we've never set a deadline in which to take out papers, so hypothetically, someone could come in at two o'clock on Friday to take out papers for any office and then have until five PM to get them turned in. The deadline to go into my office, which is just basically left-hand feeding the right, is March the sixth. And then the deadline to withdraw after that is, is March the eighth, so if you decide, long story short, if you decide to place these two offices on the ballot, it would follow the same procedures for the other positions that are going to be up in April and that would be that they would simply have to file twenty signatures, twenty registered voters and then they would be able to get on the ballot.
Thank you, Ryan. I, I have no issue, I mean, these, these are open positions, so I have no issue in putting them on the annual ballot, Kelly and Rob?
I'm fine. Do we need to make a motion?
Yes.
Yes? Do you want, would you like to have a motion?
Yeah, so, so I guess I would entertain a motion, let me try to make it easy, have the agenda up in front of me, so entertain a motion to place on the annual ballot the planning board vacancy and the Hardwick member vacancy on the K to twelve Quabon Regional School District Committee.
I will make a motion as Julie just stated.
Is there, sorry, Rob, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Ryan, is that motion sufficient?
Madam Chair, it is sufficient, but I'll still need something in writing prior to February the second.
Sure. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will call the roll, Rob?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Julie is a yes, so the motion carries, thank you, and thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the board, appreciate it very much.
Next item on the agenda is committee appointment procedure and under that potential appointments, we have Lisa Cohen, Bill Cole and Rachel Lucia. So I guess just a comment about the committee appointment procedure. I think we have spoken in previous meetings about getting a letter of interest into Nicole. What, what I think and, and maybe allowing us reasonable notice to address it on an agenda. Just from a procedural standpoint, we try to make sure our agenda is set by Thursday of the week prior to the meeting, so when a letter comes in on Saturday or Sunday or even Monday prior to them, or, or email comes during that timeframe, right prior to the, the meeting. It's, it's sometimes difficult for us to get it on the agenda, so. What we would ask is that you be patient with us if, as these things start to come in on when we're addressing them in our agendas. We'll address them as best we can, but again, we try to set our agenda as best we can. It is the chair's discretion to allow unforeseen's or, or immediate things that come up that need addressing. But we would just ask that you give us some time to, to get things on the agenda and to address them. Specifically with regard to the three that we have listed with, with regard to Lisa and Bill, Lisa Cohen and Bill Cole requesting appointment to the, the master plan community development advisory committee. In, in speaking with the town clerk and also speaking with Nicole, we're sort of working through what our bylaws say and what our requirements say about the, that there are two master plan committees. I believe there's an implementation committee and I believe that there's an advisory committee and I, I think, Kelly and Rob, I think we would need a little bit more time on this to make sure that we understand the composition of both committees. And Ryan, if you're still, I don't know if Ryan's still on, but certainly Nicole can speak, the implementation. And so my understanding, if, if you want to correct me, my understanding is the implementation committee is a committee that's tasked with, once the plan is developed, figuring out how to implement that plan, the advisory committee, I believe, is the one that would be tasked with actually coming up with any proposed changes and revisions to the master plan, am I correct in that?
Well, I'm, I'm just going to preface my remarks with the fact that, you know, you know, thanks to Julie Marquette and Lucinda, you know, putting everything up on the website. You know, that master plan implementation committee is a committee that was created by the planning board. So that was unknown at the time that Lisa Condit was appointed to that committee, so. My only comment is the fact that anything to do with the master plan implementation committee should be coming from the planning board, they're the elected board that established that according to the agreement that was on, you know, filed in two thousand fourteen, signed by Eric Fleming and Kenan Young. The other committee, I, I don't have any other information that I can, that I can speak to, I, I can mention that there's a capital planning committee that is a little bit separate that I have research on that we can talk about it another time, but exclusively talking about master plan and master plan implementation committee. That is the planning board's domain, in my opinion, based upon records that have come to light.
So I, I think what this just proves is we appreciate the interest at Lisa and Bill in being appointed to these committees, I think we have a little bit more due diligence to do on the committees and you know, sort of making sure we understand how these things all work. Kelly, Rob, thoughts, and, and we may have to, you know, unfortunately, we may have to, we made an earlier appointment, we may have to rescind that appointment. Because the implementation committee is very, the composition of that committee is very specific, so I, I think what I'm not doing a great job at saying is that I think we need to take this under advisement, to take your request for appointment under advisement to be addressed at a, a, a future, not a distant meeting. Perhaps it's something we can address at our next meeting once we've had a chance to make sure that we understand the appointing authority with the town clerk sort of guiding us under, under that. Kelly and Rob, thoughts on that?
I just have a, a comment or a thought or a question, maybe it's all of the above. If these committees and boards, and I'm not just, not just this one, but I think we're all aware that several committees and boards don't meet on a regular basis or take the action that maybe they were, you know, first intended for, you know, what happens if there is, you know, interest in, in these committees and boards to maybe, you know, light a fire again? And we're just kind of at a standstill now because of, you know, the way it was. And we're just kind of at a standstill now because of, you know, the way it was created. If, if the planning board hasn't done anything with this and I, and I'm just using this as an example, I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus. But if they haven't done anything with it, you know, what can be done to. You know, allow these people to maybe pitch in and help.
I think Ryan certainly could speak, but one of the, the implementation committee was created by bylaw. So if we're going to change that, we have to have a change in the bylaw. As far as the other.
Madam Chair, I want to, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to clarify something. The master plan implementation committee. That was, to my knowledge, that was not created by bylaw. The capital planning committee was created by bylaw in 2011. Okay. So the master, based upon the information that I've reviewed. With the document that Fleming, Mr. Fleming and Mr. Young had signed. Where had mentioned that the planning board was the creator of the master plan implementation committee. So it gets a little bit confusing. But I just want to. You know, capital planning is, is budgetary. Those are large items. Those are. You know, we need a police station, we need a municipal building, we need a fire truck, we need an ambulance. That's capital planning. The master plan in itself is something that was created a very long time ago. And there was a, a, a litany of different items that were there. This master plan implementation committee is. According to what I've read, and I apologize to those listening. You know, unfortunately, the institutional knowledge and the history isn't always, you know, there. We're a small town. We don't necessarily. Have the capabilities to remember all these things. So something that happened with great fanfare and, and interest many years ago. May have died out and we're trying to, you know, reestablish it, which is great, but we have to ensure that. We're following the proper procedures. Ordinarily, a committee that's created by the town. For example, the capital planning committee, also the page agricultural fund trustees, that was created by town meeting. Those things are always ongoing. If your board, your board of selectmen. Decided to have an advisory committee for, I don't know, studying gypsy moths, just as a sake of example. You're typically tasked and there's an expiration date. And if something doesn't happen, if there's no report made to town meeting. Ordinarily, that committee is disbanded. That's something where if a report isn't made to the town meeting that was created by town meeting, it's, it's disbanded. But with the board of selectmen. You can create any committee that you so desire. And what we're dealing with here with this master plan and the master plan implementation committee. Seems to be that another elected board are the ones responsible. For, you know, the, the creation of these other committees and how they operate, et cetera. So. It almost seems to me that the board of selectmen. Really isn't that involved. I mean, there's oversight, but you're dealing with two elected boards. And, and in regards to this master plan and the implementation committee. I hope that makes sense to those that are listening.
Thank you, Ryan.
I, I guess I'm still, I don't want to discourage interest in this, but you can hear just from the dialogue. That I think we have some sorting out to do. And I think we. I believe that we understand that the person we appointed to the implementation committee. Was not the correct appointment. So we're going to have to rescind that appointment at some point. Because I believe the intent was not to be on the implementation committee, but to be on this other sort of other committee. So I would, I would, I, I guess I would prefer that we take the time. And that doesn't mean, you know, a month. That means let's get us on our next agenda and try to sort things out and make sure we really understand. The specific committees. We're, we're calling things, you know, capital planning committee, but then we're having a master plan advisory committee, which I believe we have. I think, and again, I presume it was created by the board of selectmen at some point, but there's six members that are on that committee. And I believe we have three vacancies right now. Am I correct in that, Nicole? And Ryan?
Oh, which, which committee?
The advisory.
The, the advisory committee has. One, two, three. Five. With two vacant, but Eric Fleming has also. Resigned effective immediately. So that becomes three vacancies with. Expiration terms of 23, 23 and 24. But again, as Ryan had stated, I do believe these are planning board committees as, as well as the implementation committee.
Madam Chair.
Implementation committee is not in our committees and appointments that you made as of July 1 of last year.
Julie, it's Eric. Can I pipe in here?
Yes, you can.
The master plan implementation committee started. Towards the end of the master plan process and it began in 2000. We began to update it again in 2010 because it requires it to be updated in 10 years. And I'm not exactly sure when that implementation committee was, was formed, but I, I think it was towards, you know. Somewhere in between the first master plan and the second master plan update. The advisory committee was a spin off of that. Because after 2010, when we began to redo the master plan again, we, it just died on the vine. And then we. Were tackling a lot of other issues with grants and whatnot. And so that other committee was formed, but it really was a spin off. Of the master plan explanation committee. The. The other committee, the. Sorry, I'm drawing a blank. Has nothing to do, the. Oh, Ryan, help me out here. What capital planning committee, right, has nothing to do with master plan, nothing. That was a totally separate committee that. That dealt with. Exactly that, things that, you know, were costing the town, I think over a certain dollar amount. And that committee was formed to, to deal with those issues, but it had nothing to do with master plan.
So Eric, to your recollection, was this, this other advisory committee, was that? As, as a shootout from the planning board, was that under the direction of the planning board also?
I don't believe either one. I mean, I think what happened was the, the. It was brought forth to the selectmen to create these committees to do this work. Much like the, I don't believe the master plan committee really was formed by the, it was formed by the selectmen, not the planning board. And it might've been under the advice of the planning board, but it wasn't, planning board doesn't, you know, appoint committees. So. All of these committees are appointed by the selectmen. And I just think that it was around Teresa's reign when the implementation committee. Was formed to deal with a bunch of stuff that we had to deal with that were slightly outside of the master plan. And so it morphed into the, from the master plan implementation, I'm screwing that up, to the advisory committee. Whether the members of those committees sort of matched up or not, I, I, I don't remember, but. That was the intent of that committee. It was to deal. Yeah, it was to deal more with a number of grants that we had coming forward through. Pioneer Valley and CMR PC.
But in a document. Eric, the planning board created the master plan implementation committee to track the implementation of the master plan recommendations.
Okay. But again, I don't think the master plan has the ability to appoint committees. We might have recommended to the selectmen to do it, but we don't appoint committees. I mean, I'm, I'm fairly certain of that. We don't have the power to do that. I don't think, maybe I'm wrong. It was like 20 years ago.
Yeah. In my last town, the planning board actually did create it. And has one going right now because this is a new master plan. So the planning board has created a master plan implementation committee in my last town. Whether or not it's a statute or it's just. You know, allowed. I don't know. I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't want to tit for tat. I mean, I think that. It's a great idea to get this off and running again, whoever is responsible for it. You're just an independent elected board. From the selectmen.
Well, who appoints it? I believe the selectmen have to appoint. Of anyone to be on a committee, I believe.
Great idea. Like you said, Julie, for us to get some more information.
Yeah, I, I know you had your hand up, Bill, so I'll let you, if you have a comment or a question a second. I, I think the conversation that you're just hearing proves that, and these are going to continue because as we're resurrecting these, so I think. We would just ask that you be patient with us a little bit as we're re, re. We're resurrecting these committees that haven't met in a bit. And again, as was said, there's institutional knowledge that has, is no longer. You know, sitting on the boards or on any committees relative to how this all, all this, we just want to do it proper. We're, we're already. In a position where we have to rescind an appointment that we made for someone who was very interested in being on. The master plan and it wasn't done properly. So a good indicator to us that we just need to have our ducks in a row so, and clear, so that whoever follows. This administration is clear on what each committee is and who the appointing authority is. So I guess I would just feel better if we took. A two week period for our next meeting. Make sure we understand what the appointing authority is. How this all works. Make sure we have the appropriate composition of what these committees should be like. And then entertain the. The request to be appointed. Bill, did you want to say something?
Yes, thanks. I would. It certainly does make sense to figure out which committees are. Going to be populated and effective and. You know, empowered to do some things. I feel like, you know, it was very good what Julie put up. And so we can see a lot of this documentation that brings. Brings back a lot of the history. And the, the, I think what Nicole was referring to was what's on file at PVPC. From talking about the town of Hardwick and the community development strategy. Dated fiscal year 2015. And in that it does say that the master plan implementation committee. Was created by the planning board. I don't know what that means. It has in any authority or it has to go back to the planning board and from there. You know, pass on any further recommendations. I do think that Lisa Condit that you appointed to that committee was, I believe, specific in asking that. Her, her thought was that that is the committee that would be able to. You know, make some changes and be effective. And she, when she was appointed early in December. I don't know whether it was to the correct committee or the advisory committee or. Either one technically by name. So you might want to look back at the minutes on that, which, which are not posted yet. But yes, I think a lot of us will be looking forward to seeing which committees are going to be. Active and also which committees should simply be made inactive or disbanded or whatever. There's, there's plenty of them across the board that. Haven't met in half a dozen years sometimes. So. Good. That's, that's all. Look forward to hearing what you learn in the next couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you. Kelly and Rob, is that okay, the approach?
Yep.
Okay. And again, it's not something we're going to sit and let. It, it, we're going to need to sort of, again, as these things come up, we're going to need to sort of sort through them for committees that are. And, and just sort of to speak to Bill's, Bill's comment, we did, and when we did our appointments this year. We were, we were thoughtful. There were committees that were not reappointed because we, their, their purpose was finished. So we are certainly ongoing and as Ryan continues to sort of move through things and, and. Get a better handle on, you know, some of the committees and such that we have. Throughout town, I think we'll continue to do that when we do our annual appointments. To not reappoint committees that no longer have a function or purpose. So. Nicole, can we make sure that we resolve, try to, to try to resolve? The origin of where, confirm where the origin of these things came from, either through minutes. Maybe Nicole and Ryan, either through minutes of the planning board or the board of selectmen, going back to when these were actually created. So we can define who the real appointing authority is for these.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill and Lisa for your interest and we'll definitely be back to sooner than later.
Julie?
Yes.
Did you want to consider the council on aging or should we? Oh, that's right. That's what I did. So that's, the procedure is what I, you know, the intent on the agenda was that. We would talk about procedure. So when people are interested in a committee, shall we? Send it to, you know, that department or that board and have them discuss it and send a recommendation back to the board of selectmen? Would you like to appoint based on qualifications? Would you like to appoint based on first come, first serve on, on request? Once again, I certainly don't want to discourage any interest, you know, as we all know, it's hard to find as it is. But you know, as you get a myriad of, of requests to a limited number of vacancies. You know, is there somewhere better that we could fit them? Is there, you know, another board that we could redirect them to? I, you know, like I had, I had actually given the request to the Hardwood Council on Aging and asked them to meet with the potential. Applicant to be on the board and then for the board, for the council on aging board to send a recommendation to the Hardwood Board of Selectmen to then appoint them. So I mean, and that was just kind of like. Logical, I guess, when I did it, but I, I think that the board should probably sort of think about a procedural way of, of how to go about this.
I think sort of what you outlined, Nicole, I think is good. I mean, I think not to make light of the situation, but I think we may. Present board included for me, but we've maybe sat on boards and councils. Where maybe the person that's on that doesn't have the best skillset for their, that council. And maybe they're better served on another committee or something. So I think it's sort of. Doing a bad job at explaining it, but I, I think it makes sense. What you're saying, Nicole, is if someone is applying to be on the council on aging. Group that they, it should go, that letter of interest should go to the council as well for their vetting. And making sure that they feel that, you know, that person would be appropriate and the best fit for their group. And then come to the board with their recommendation for appointment.
Okay. And, and I think not, you know, to be clear, not saying that the board of selectmen won't appoint someone just because maybe the board says. You know, they're too young, they're too this, they're too that, as a personal opinion rather than a, a best interest for the entire town of Hardwick. Position that the board of selectmen ultimately has, you know, the decision to appoint if they see so fit. But will certainly take the, whatever board they're requesting from under advisement. Is that fair?
I think that's fair. And I think that's what we try to do in any employment situations and, and oftentimes these, these things don't come to the board. They go to the council first. Or to the group first, and then they come to us with their recommendation. So they may not come through us directly. They may go directly to. For example, if someone wanted to be appointed to the.
We just had a reservation.
It went directly to conservation and conservation came to us. So whatever mechanism it gets, I guess I would say, this is how I look at it. If, if the request for appointment comes to us, then we should send it back to the appropriate. Group for their review discussion, getting to know the person, seeing what their skills qualifications are, and then come to us with a request for a final approval. Or it can go directly to that group if there is a vacancy. And I would say if there are multiple. You know, we could have, let's just use the master plan as an example. If, if we have. You know, we could have, let's just use the master plan as an example. If if we have three open vacancies and the first three people. You know, we have three people that have interest, but you know, six months down the road, somebody else expresses interest. We don't want to leave those three positions vacant. Looking for other people to, you know, show interest. So I I think the first come, first serving is um. How we should operate because otherwise we'd be holding these positions open. Um, for probably longer than we need to waiting for. Um, people to to show their interest. I I think as a result of the census and hopefully everybody here is going to complete their census and send it back. For our clerk, but y- you're going to indicate interest on that census, hopefully of groups you're going to be, want to be involved with, and then the town clerk can. Um. Hopefully, you know, direct or or let the appropriate groups know that this person's interested, and it may be the group itself that's. Sort of initiating the process.
Madam Chair, I've um. You know, mailing over the weekend came in. I I probably got about a dozen. Uh, people that are interested and what I'll be doing is I'll be creating an Excel spreadsheet and a database and I'll. If if people are interested in more than one committee, I mean, I I will share the the um. Interest with everyone. I can either scan all of the forms or I can just basically. Um, create all the different committees and those that are interested and and forward them onto your board so that you. Uh, have those parties that are interested and you can see what, why they're interested and what their qualifications are. So um, it's it's been a, it's been a good response so far. Uh, but it's only been one day getting mail back, so hopefully that will, that will continue and those that want to help town out will let us know.
Thank you, Ryan.
That's great.
Kelly and Rob, are you sort of okay with that procedure?
I I think that sounds great. It's a check and balance too. Between the boards and the in committees and and us. I think that's good.
Sounds good.
Bill, one more question before we move on.
Yes, thank you. As uh, so obviously some committees uh are appointed by the. Planning board uh possibly and and most are filled by the board of selectmen and one, I guess the finance at least is done by Ryan. Um, I saw some updates on that, and I thought there was going to be, in fact, I think the agenda said that it would be finance and board of selectmen tonight, but. Seemingly not. Can you tell us about uh new appointments to the finance committee?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
So uh Christopher Coleross. From Ridge Road. Has been appointed to the finance committee. Um. And he is a former finance committee member. In the uh town of Lester for over ten years. And he has a. Business of his own and a a strong acumen uh for the, for um finance and municipal government. Glenn Wojcik. Is a local business owner. And someone that had expressed interest in the finance committee. Uh Cheryl Wolf stepped down. She had been looking to um. Get off of the finance committee just to um spend, you know, just not have to worry about that committee. So. Uh, Bill, I I think you and I both have known Glenn for a number of years. I've known Glenn for a number of years. Um, he's a smart man. He's someone that I trust and I believe will. Uh, bring some renewed vigor and life into the finance committee. I would like to, you. I'm going to tell you this, folks. I've been moderator since ninety-eight, and if somebody wants to start running town meeting, by all means, come and see me and I'll help you. Um, but a lot of times. You know, Julie, you've been on it. Rob, you've been on, I I, everybody I think has been on it. But in the past, a lot of times, you know, it it wasn't uh. You know, people that wanted to get on, we were, we were missing people. We had people on there that couldn't um attend meetings et et cetera. I'm not making excuses. I'm not saying people were were. Were bad, et cetera, but I honestly feel now that I've got. A proactive finance committee that is going to ensure that. Our financial picture isn't something that's going to lean to catch us off guard. Um, we need proactive people out there ensuring that. If there is going to be something happening, being up, you know, the school budget increasing by X amount or, you know, a capital planning. Uh expenditure, et cetera. Um, it's been very difficult trying to get people on that committee. I used to say it was seventy. I actually. Created a list. I'm almost at a hundred people in this town. That I talked to or asked about serving on the committee. And those people didn't want to. So it's it's a tough committee assignment. Nobody wants to be up there saying uh, no potentially to all these different boards, but. Historically. Finance committee, you know, town meeting trusts their decision because of of the process that they go through and and how they examine. Each department and when they hold their meetings, you know, it it it's basically when you come to town meeting, it's like if finance committee says yes, you. Understand that they have done the due diligence with each respective department head, so. Um. I feel very good about the people that are on there. Leon Small is the other member as well as uh Vinnie Nastasi. And Keenan Young. Keenan, as everybody knows, is a former selectman for many years. He has a lot of the uh municipal knowledge. That I think is necessary that other members don't have. Um, so every meeting is is posted. You can go to mytowngovernment.org. Uh, and I tell everybody that if there is a particular board that you are interested in finding out when their meetings are. There's a very simple link. You can click subscribe to this board, and by doing so, when you enter your email address. You will receive a notification whenever a meeting is posted, whenever a meeting agenda has been changed, when a meeting is canceled, et cetera. So. The town of Hardwick certainly has the tools to ensure that those that are interested in the process are kept well informed. Um, and I hope that answers your question, Bill. Sorry to get a little bit long-winded.
Thank you. I think they're great assets. Appreciate your explanation.
Thank you, Ryan and Bill. So Nicole. Well, while um Ryan was speaking, it sort of brought to mind, we have a couple of resignations that have been tendered. We historically approve the res um. Resignations. Can we get those on even though we know that they've been filed? Um, we have to approve the rec uh resignations, I believe. Um, am I correct in that, Ryan?
Uh, no, if it if it's an elective position, no, elected or appointed. So long as they file the resignation with my office, there's no. Quote unquote approval. Once it's filed, that, you know, it it it's a, it's effective. Um, you can certainly. Say we accept, et cetera, but once it's filed in my office, that is. That is it. So you don't have to do anything with Eric's nor with Ned'sies.
Okay. I just, we typically acknowledge them, I think, but if you don't think we need to do that, I think that's fine. I think we have in the past, whether we maybe just to be conservative, we may not have needed to do that, but, okay. Thank you. Anything, anything? Anything else on this? Um, it will be nice to have a um. I I don't want to use the word functioning finance committee because if the finance committee has always been functioning, but. Um, a proactive and engaged finance committee, we we haven't really had. A a full committee of those folks for a while, so this is sort of exciting. Um, so with regard to Nicole, we're through regard to Rachel. Um, has Rachel um. Uh Rachel's appointment to the council on aging, has the council on aging actually reviewed that?
Um, it's on their agenda. I don't remember exactly when it is, but I did see it on their agenda. So when they meet and recommend it, I'm sure that Eileen will send it off to me.
Okay, so um, I guess we'll take that under advisement for future um, future appointment. At after the um, the council meets. Um, discussion inter vote relative to ARPA funding. I don't think we have anything there, Nicole, do we?
No.
Okay. Um, so we have a series of meeting minutes. Um, and I know there's been corrections that have gone back and forth. Are are we comfortable in voting on the minutes from October third, October fourth, October tenth? October twenty-fourth, November seventh, November ninth, and November twenty-first?
I am.
Yep.
Okay, so um, I think it's okay if we vote on them in a group. So um. I will entertain a motion that we um, approve the meeting minutes of the board of selectmen. Three, twenty twenty-two, October four, twenty twenty-two, October ten, twenty twenty-two, October twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. November seven, twenty twenty-two, November nine, twenty twenty-two, and November twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I would make a motion to approve. The. Meeting minutes as stated by Julie.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Um, Kelly, you are now first on my screen. Kelly Kemp?
Yes.
Rob, Ruggles?
Yes, yes.
And Julie. We get a double yes on that one. That was a, a, sorry, my internet's unstable again. That. By Kelly, yes by Rob and uh Julie Quink is a yes also. So those um minutes have been officially approved. Nicole, can we make sure that those get filed where they need to go and made publicly available?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hopefully at our next me. Um, meeting minutes to approve to get us um closer to being a report.
Hmm, I think you said, are we going to be current at the next meeting? Yes, we will with minutes. And then did you ask about the town administrator report?
Yes, sorry. So I I made a comment that we're getting closer. We will have many minutes on the agenda. Hopefully for our next meeting, and that will bring us closer to being current. And I did ask if you're um wanted to go through your um administrator report.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, there is no report in your packet. Um, I, we had a holiday. I was sick. I had a conference that I went to that I was preparing for because I presented, and I just wasn't able to get everything in there that I wanted to get to you without. Doing my due diligence and getting everything in there. Um, if you don't mind, in two weeks, I'll have a nice, robust report for you for the entire month. Of January or the January into February. Nothing really extremely. Serious or um, you know, that I I felt that needed to be in the report um to you. Was extremely important. I mean, I do have. A little bit more of an update from USDA, but uh, what, once these easements are are then recorded, I will have even more of an update, so. Um, I I certainly can. It's it's probably seventy-five percent finished. If you would like me to send it to you, or if you don't mind it going into the next agenda. That would be more ideal for me.
I have no issue with it. I mean, as long as there's nothing. It, uh, most of the things are just an update from meeting to meeting, so I have no issue with deferring till the next meeting unless there's nothing, anything pressing that we need to be aware of or discuss.
Same. Good.
Rob?
I just have, I'm sorry, sorry.
So.
Okay. Sorry, Nicole.
No, no, I'm sorry. Zoom is extremely difficult. Um, I did send you all reports today. We had our boiler inspections and we have some violations. Uh, not quite so serious. Some certificates weren't issued, but um, most of them were like carbon monoxide detectors need to be installed. So I've sent that off to BEC and we are also in contact with. Um, the electricians because there's, they have to be hardwired. So I just wanted you to be aware, but we are um on top of that. Um, it was the municipal building is. Had, ha, you know, you can read it as municipal building, fire department. Library and townhouse each had a e- separate violation, so we will get to, we will correct those and and those will be in compliance. Probably hopefully by the next meeting if we can actually get the labor to happen, but maybe within a month.
Great, thank you. Um. Signatures and approvals. I know we have the winter recovery grant reimbursement and I I believe there are others, Nicole, that are requiring signature. One of them being, one of them being the easement, the updated easement.
So for the signatures that will be in your box will be the renewal certificate for the ABC. The grant of easements and easement agreement, which again are dependent upon each other, the Mayflower valuation and um. And the winter recovery.
Um, so ca- tell me a little bit about the winter recovery.
The winter recovery was a DOT grant that was sort of um. Just given to towns. Um, it was, it's it's a RAP program, a winter recovery assistance program. We got a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand, seventy-seven dollars and sixteen cents. It's a reimbursement grant, grant. Um. The funds have been. Thirty-five percent of the project funds have been completed for stone seal. And fourteen thousand, four hundred twenty feet of green, Greenwich Road. Is been used to preserve the roadway. Um. Marty has signed, Lori Delollio has signed. Um, the. The turnover, the counts payable are in here and. Um, exactly, you know, what was spent by all states, which was stone seal and asphalt adjustment. So it's a, it was, it was a, I don't even know that it was a grant. I certainly don't want to take any credit away from Marty because he's amazing at what he does with the grants. I think this was more of a um, you know. Um, it it was just like an assistance program through DOT that was given to municipalities based on their um, population. Uh, but Marty does do great things, and I would love to just say that as well through all these storms. Um, they are working so hard. They're so, they're so short-staffed and they're keeping all the roads clean. They've been out all night. They're still out. Um. Been out. Cleaning our mu- municipal lot. I just looked out there because I thought I saw somebody and actually cleaned off my car, so please um. I have so much respect. I like, I'm so happy because my car was filled with six feet of snow, so I'm really happy about that. Those guys do. Are working really, really hard, even when we think that. Um, you know, it's snowing an inch or it's freezing rain. They still have to go out. They have to sand, so they're doing a great job.
It has certainly been a uh killer winter. Just the small storms actually are worse than eighteen inches of snow. So they are busting their butts.
They do a great job and um, sometimes it's, it's hard to remember that when you're driving down the road and there might be a little snow on it. And it might not be perfectly clean, but we don't really re- um, realize the effort that goes into. To try to keep all of our uh people safe, so I agree, Nicole and and Kelly. Um. So uh, anything else under signatures and approvals, Nicole?
No, that's all. I'll save the uh. The yes for the next meeting so you can have it in your packet and review it.
Okay, and you'll leave anything that needs to be signed in the box for us to sign?
Yes, I have it all right here to put in the box when the meeting's over.
Great, thank you. Uh, under selectmen roundtable, um, I know I had a couple of thoughts that I wanted to share on this, but um, it's been a very long day. So I cannot remember what they were, um, which is unfortunate. I wrote them down, um, and I don't have it in front of me. Um, a couple of thoughts. We've started back up the monthly select meet with the selectmen. Um, Rob will be doing that this week on Wednesday, I believe, at three. Um, which is basically our, the opportunity for our boards um to get together with um the board. Kelly has already done a meeting. Rob will do um this meeting and I will do the next meeting. Um. What am I missing? Kelly and Rob under selectmen roundtable? Is there anything? Or anything you want to add?
I'm having the same brain issue. I swear there was something and now I can't um. Although I think it was maybe just the committees and boards that I'm thinking about.
Um, actually, I did. I just, when you said that, it reminded me. So now that the board of selectmen, the sewer commission has um, is no longer in existence and and the board of selectmen are. Um, the sewer commissioners, Nicole. and and the Board of Selectmen are, um, the Sewer Commissioners, Nicole, can we put a regular um piece on our agenda to deal with any sewer commission business? Um, I'm presuming that we've got abatements and things that we should be authorizing that are coming through. Um, and Rob, as the former Chair of the Sewer Commission, if there's anything else that we should be addressing as a board, um, can you reach out to Nicole and make sure those things get on the agenda for us to address?
Yeah. Think the only thing we really got to do is make sure the abatements get taken care of at this point. Um we should probably check in with Scott. He usually does a monthly um sewer report, the Superintendent. And there have been several issues in Gilleville that they've been taking care of so far. Hopefully they'll get fixed next summer. That's it. That's kind of stuff we just got to stay on top of.
Does it make sense to allocate like a half hour or so of one meeting a month to, you know, to this?
Probably be a good idea.
And he could come like
If we need more time, we can just run it in.
Yeah. Julie?
Yeah, that's fine, because it would be part of our normal agenda anyways. So um maybe if we want to do it on the front end of our agenda. And that way, anyone that's involved specifically for um someone attending for specifically for Sewer Commission doesn't need to sit through the whole board meeting to to get to the topic.
And I, I mean, I think it would be good if Scott could keep coming to them. I don't, our Monday is okay for him. I know you guys switched up your meetings at one point.
Um, he did request not to do Mondays. I believe he has a conflict with childcare. Maybe we could do a Zoom meeting or something.
Yeah, his, his report and then be able to review it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, he can
Sorry, no, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, he could always call in or something for, even if we're having a live meeting.
Yeah, make it, I mean, whatever's easy for him, but just so he has, you know, the communication with us too.
Nicole, could you check in with Scott and see if the, what we're proposing will work for him? If we do it once a month, then if if Mondays, you know, maybe let us know if Mondays don't work and maybe we can just, as Rob mentioned, maybe it could just be a quick phone call in um to review any um questions we might have on his report.
Yes, absolutely. Um, and then, you know, on the backend, we're working, uh, yes, we have abatements that we've been saving um that should be coming to you, absolutely. Uh, we're working on rates, we're working on uh policy and procedure. Uh, today Angie was going through the sewer um bu- not bylaw, policy, I guess it is. Maybe it's bylaw, I'm not sure. And um and kind of looking at other towns, seeing uh what what we should implement. Uh, been working with Lori Stevens. We've, we've essentially only had one meeting. This Friday, I believe, Scott and I are going to review what she proposed that I sent to you that will be coming to you, but we would like to have more clear definitions and, you know, answers for you before we uh bring it to you, because it's so preliminary. I don't think anybody um quite understands everything. So and Scott had some, some concerns over some of uh what Lori had presented. So, you know, we're sort of working on the backend before we bring it to you as the Sewer Commissioners on uh going forward with everything sewer. So whether it's um, you know, the rates, the abatements, how we should go forward with abatements, um betterments, uh, just just a regular policy and procedure, even laying pipe, you know, everything that um we feel could use an update. So we've been working on the backend too as well. Um, certainly want to bend Rob's ear a little bit, also, you know, with his expertise uh before we formally bring it to you, so we can have all clear-cut answers when we bring it to the board with Lori. So probably, I guess, a meeting in February. Maybe the second meeting, so we have some time to digest extremely technical.
It's fine with me.
Sounds good.
Uh, anything else under Selectmen Roundtable?
I don't think, I don't think I have anything.
Rob?
You're good.
All right, so last on the item on the agenda is um adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moving seconded, um, uh Kelly?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Julie is yes, so the meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-five. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.